All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the June 12th Urban Experience Committee meeting. I call this meeting to order, and we'll start with approval of the minutes.
So move approval of the minutes?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. We'll start with first thing on the agenda for discussion items, which is a resolution appointing Jacoby Byrd as council director. I think council president is gonna talk about that position. Jacoby?
Yes, so as folks know, Hanley Allers, who's served us amazingly over the last few years, has decided she's gonna take a break from city service. And Jacoby's been doing her job for the last few weeks. Ms. Allers has several more weeks of vacation coming, so she'll probably be on the payroll through my last day, is my guess. But we wanted to, well, I guess it's my choice to bring it forward, but under our new law, which just went into effect, council would vote to appoint Jacoby Byrd to be the new council director. So that's, this would follow our new law.
Any questions about that one?
Only in total support.
Jacoby, you're doing a great job.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Way to go, Jacoby. Another Hoya up here on the dais.
Yeah.
Have to make that, okay. Item number two is council confirmation of mayoral appointee for the Office of Civil Rights Equity Inclusion, and we have City Administrator Johnny Perkins here.
Thank you, council members, opponent, members of the city council. Johnny Perkins, city administrator, on behalf of Mayor Woodward, pleased and honored to put in nomination the name of Jarrell Haynes for the Director of the Office of Civil Rights, Equity, and Inclusion. Mr. Haynes currently serves as the city's civil rights coordinator. He's also served as the past board president for Spokane Public Schools, also been involved with the Excelsior Youth Center. On a personal note, as a football referee, Mr. Haynes is a football coach at Ferris High School, and was recently named the new head football coach at Ferris High School. So very proud of him for that accomplishment as well. And he is here this afternoon, so I'd like to introduce and have him come up here, Mr. Jarrell Haynes.
It's a lifelong honor and pleasure to be standing before you today with even the slightest opportunity of being able to carry forward this work and partnership with you all and the administration. So I don't, I mean, all of you know who I am already. I don't really know what else to say other than, you know, open the floor for questions if you have any.
Counselor, sorry.
I just have a comment. I have respected your work for a very, very long time.
Appreciate that.
And I just want to tell you, I'm happy this has finally happened. I'm sorry that it's taken so long to put this all together, but I'm thrilled, and I think you're gonna do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just want to say congratulations, and I think it's a great choice. And also, just to share, I think by five minutes after the press release went out, I called you and said, let's get language access implemented.
You did, 100%.
We planned to move.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Absolutely.
So, of course, I'm happy to see you and happy to sponsor this appointment. It has been a tumultuous two years for this department to be filled. What do you see your first step in doing as you go forward in this area?
Other than language access?
Other than language access, yes, yes, yes.
Well, I would really love to hit the ground running with hiring the other positions within the office as soon as possible.
And then, of course, I'm kind of biased about Ferris High School, since my son was playing football there. I'm just looking at your balance of time, because both can be very challenging.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we had really thoughtful conversations with myself, city administrator, the mayor, and even Brian Cottington around that topic. And I think all of you know me well enough to know that for a number of years, I've juggled and worn many hats all at the same time, and it's never had any negative impact on my work. So I hope that there's enough trust here and built here to know and understand that this is my main priority, and any and everything that needs to be done will always get done above and beyond what's expected.
All right, well, thank you. We're very excited to have you step up.
Absolutely. Thanks, everybody.
All right, third thing on the agenda is the monthly DSC permit report with Steve McConnell. McDonald, I made up a new name for you, McConnell.
I'll take it. Yes, good afternoon, Chair, and members of the council. We're gonna be talking about the May permit numbers. And to, the blue is year-to-date, and the orange is May, year-to-year. So bottom line is, we're up both in year-to-date and year-to-year over the last four-year average. Things are strong on total permits, and again, those are all permits, including building permits. The second slide just talks about building permits specifically. And again, we're up on the four-year average in year-to-date and year-to-year for May, so things are strong there. Now, we're gonna shift gears and focus not on permits but on housing units. And so multifamily housing units is what we're starting with for May and the year-to-date. And we're up in the four-year average for the year-to-year comparison, but we're down in May compared to the previous years. So, and single-family residents has been following that same trend line that we've had recently, where single-family homes have not been at the four-year average, while multifamily has been well above it. And that same case is in place in May of this year. And then we take a look and break it down to all residential units issued, breaking it down into single-family, duplex, multifamily, and change of use. We've started adding in change of use because most of the change of use permits that we issue are conversions to residential, either to duplexes, rarely single-family homes, but also oftentimes multifamily projects. And then if we look at that same category of housing units broken down for the year-to-date, you see that we are down on single-family residents year-to-year. When we look back at the previous three years, we are up significantly for duplex units. We're up very, very much on the multifamily units, and then the change of use numbers are down year-to-date. And now, we have broken out the BOKA, kind of shaping Spokane Housing, BOKA and ADUs, and you see that right now, we have 25 BOKA projects that are in review. We've issued 30 since the start of the BOKA program. And on the ADUs, we have 12 ADUs in review right now and another 41 that we've issued. So that's coming along, not nearly the numbers that we hope, in the fact that if you look at the units in pre-dev, we have a significant number of units in pre-dev. Some number of those, we hope, will come through the system, but there has been a continued interest, and people are coming in and talking to us about their projects, and that's when we capture that.
Your asterisk here says that 30 of them are in the fee waiver area. I thought my understanding was that this was a citywide waiver. Am I wrong on that?
Citywide waiver for ADUs?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. There was a prescribed area, I had thought.
Okay.
I can double-check, but I know that there was a program put in place that Councilwoman Kinnear supported, but I'll double-check.
Again, I could be wrong, that's why I was asking here, but we'll follow up with that.
Are you talking GFCs? Is that what you're talking? Because there isn't waiver for that, but if we're talking like permit fees, it's just in the areas around the arterials.
Long transit, frequent transit, half a mile within frequent transit.
Yep. And then, this slide talks about the residential units currently in plan review. You can see that the single-family numbers are way up for the ones that are actually in plan review now, so this means somebody has taken the time to do their design and submit and pay for plan review. So I think this is an indication that May was slow because of some wariness about what was gonna happen with the GFCs, and some people holding back to make sure they understood. And then, now we've got a significant number of single-family residences in plan review.
So Steve, the new, okay, I got it. Keep going.
Okay. We have 11 new duplexes that are currently in plan review, 13 multifamily projects, but the key there is representing 945 units. So in going back and looking what our typical multifamily permits, how many units they typically have, it's usually on average about 30. I mean, one big project can make a difference and kind of skew that, but it's typically been about 30 or 40 units per multifamily project. This is seven, you know, if you take the 945 units divided by the 13, it's basically over 70 units, so 70 units on average. So that's significant to have that 945 multifamily units in review right now.
Do we know if those are affordable, or?
The only, we know which units are MFTE, and we can get that number, because we actually process them, and Terry tracks that. However, we're now adding some other checkboxes and other information on our permits, because we realize we weren't able to track it other than through anecdotes, knowing if something had Catholic charities on it, then that was gonna be affordable, but we don't know what percentage. Is that for low income, very low income? So we're trying to adjust our application, so we track that information, but we're not able to track that now, just the, what I call workforce housing or MFTE.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah. And then the other thing to note, so bottom line here, in plan review, again, this is ones where people have taken significant steps and paid money, so we feel pretty good unless something terrible happens with the economy or an individual project, that the overwhelming majority, if not all, of those 1,100 units are gonna be issued. These are all now just in plan review. And then at the bottom of the chart, you see that we have, through the pre-development process, or through people that apply for the multifamily tax exemption program, another 3,000 units that are kind of in the system. And next, we break things down for May by council district. You can see that the building permits issued are fairly aligned there in May, but the more important thing to take into account is year-to-date. And on the year-to-date, you can notice that District 1 has almost doubled the valuation that the other two districts had, and that did not used to be the case with the old alignment. Obviously, with the new council alignment, including downtown, it seems that this is kind of the trend, just based on the cost to develop downtown and the cost of the projects being done there.
Could we pull downtown out, just to have a separate, you know, stat that we can look at?
We could probably do that through GIS or something.
If you just take the Riverside neighborhood, basically.
Yeah, maybe we do it, well, I was trying to say, maybe we do it by the old boundary, but that wouldn't work. I mean, I'll ask, I know GIS is backed up, and we, believe me, I keep them busy with my own requests, but we'll see what we can do to break that out. Maybe zip code or some other way, I don't know. We'll look at that.
And Steve, on this, on this again, so if we were to take that number out, the Riverside neighborhood in particular would be super helpful, because there are different advantages now to building in District 1 versus the other districts.
Right.
And so it would be helpful to see if that's something that's actually making a difference, so.
Yeah. So would you, ideally, the boundary would be the greater downtown area, including the North Bank, or only a portion of the North Banks in District 1, I believe?
It would be the entirety of the Riverside neighborhood essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we just remove that one neighborhood, just to help us find out.
Okay. Okay. And then the last slide here just shows the largest projects by valuation, and you can see, this was something interesting, that half of those projects are multifamily residential, which is encouraging. So half of the largest projects by valuation are apartment buildings, basically. And that's it, unless you guys have questions? Yeah?
So I have a very important question.
Yes.
I got a call from a constituent by the name of Roger Miller, and he wants to know if he needs a permit to roller skate in a Buffalo ring.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, see, and I'm actually a Roger Miller fan, so I'm the right person for you to ask that question.
I told him you could get back to me later.
No, you can't.
You can't.
You can't.
Even with a permit.
You can't roller skate in a Buffalo ring.
Okay, all right, I'll let him know.
And you can't go swimming in a baseball pool, either.
That's unfortunate. So we talked about conversions to residential. Are we seeing any interest in or some push for conversion of office space to residential, and is that gaining any traction at all?
I mean, that's, that's been responsible for the majority of the density downtown. You know, looking at some information that Kevin put together in the planning department, downtown is one of the most dense areas in the entire two-state region between Idaho and Washington, in part because of those kind of conversions that have already taken place. And most of those conversions have happened in historic buildings, and so that's a real advantage we have going forward, because those historic buildings generally make a better residential building than some newer buildings with, without the windows and without the, you know, some, basically, the older buildings have more light coming into them, and operable windows and things like that. So that's been a real strong, strong trend that's been happening for years. Individual projects, we'll have to look into what's behind that change of use number to see which buildings in particular, but yes, that's been continuing to happen.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is spoken arts update with Melissa Huggins. Or not Melissa.
Pretty much everyone but Melissa.
All right, everyone but Melissa.
Hi, everyone. I don't think I know most of you. My name is Carrie Danowski. I am the newest staff member at Spokane Arts, serving as our operations and marketing manager. Fairly new to Spokane, been here about two years, but I am a Gonzaga grad. I've spent most of my adult life, Gonzags, spent most of my adult life out in Washington, DC, working at art museums out there, but very excited to be back in Spokane and serving in this capacity. So our first update, we have a new sculpture, a new public art sculpture that we are so excited about. It opened on May 6th of this year. As a brief reminder, the sculpture was commissioned as a part of the Riverfront Park redevelopment bond, chosen by the City of Spokane Park Board following a national call for artists. This is the sculpture. It is Stepwell by artist Jay Mijian Yun. She is out of Boston. It is an interactive sculpture that encourages folks to interact with it. You can walk through the sculpture through an ADA pathway, step up on the steps, have lunch, read your poetry. You can even go all the way to the top and see a really incredible view of the Spokane River, so highly recommend going to check that out if you haven't already. We did have an opening ceremony that was really successful, including speeches by community leaders, speech by the artist, and we had about 100 community members attend, so we were really happy with that success. And I'll hand it over to Chantel for our program update.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Chantel Jackson, and I am the program director for Spokane Arts. So two highlights of some programs that we did this year is the Artists of Color Expo and Symposium. So we were approached by Shumpike, which is based in Seattle, to partner for this program. So they, we did a satellite version of it, and so there was artists and performers and speakers that, that took place in Seattle, and we also had artists and Spokane artists and performers performing here in Spokane. And that was satellite, so folks in Spokane or Seattle could get to see our visual artists and hear our performers. It was also open to the public. We did it at the Gonzaga Urban Arts Center downtown, and it was pretty successful. We had a lot of community participation, and we had about seven visual artists and six performance artists be a part of this program. And then we just recently had our fourth annual Queer Art Walk. So if you're unfamiliar with the program, it was started by community leaders or folks in the LGBTQ+ community to highlight and celebrate visual art and performance art in the LGBTQ+ community. So we had about 16 venues and about 50 artists, which is a record number since, for the Queer Art Walk, to highlight some of the venues. Again, we partnered with Gonzaga Urban Arts Center. The library was a venue. We had local, like restaurants, breweries, First Avenue Coffee was another one. Of course, the Chase Gallery represents some of that work as well, the current exhibition that's there. And yeah, a lot of excitement from artists. And when I, I was unfortunately unable to attend, but just talking to folks, it was well-attended. A lot of community, again, participated for the Gonzaga Urban Arts Center. We partnered with Spectrum Center, and they did an open-mic night, and they said there was about 100 folks who came through to kind of see different performers, poets, there was music, there was dancers. So yeah, those were two programs that we did that were pretty successful with Spokane Arts this, this spring, actually. They were kind of back-to-back. So one was in, the expo was in May, and the Queer Art Walk was the first, first weekend, or the first Friday in June, and the work is still up in most venues except for the Gonzaga Urban Arts Center. So we have a map, we have information, so if you're by the office, you can pick up a map. It's also on our social media, so if you wanted to still see some of the work and you didn't get an opportunity to, you have the rest of June to be able to do that. Thank you.
All right. So I'm probably the, I'm the second newest member of Spokane Arts. I do the Asphalt Art Program, I'm their director there. So a little background about me, I've done some art for Spokane Arts before I worked for them, and I've done a bunch of arts, art around the city the last, like, since I was probably 15, so the last 15 years. How our program works, you guys have probably heard about it, probably before I did. We are funded through the red light and schools-owned ticket cameras. We get about 6% of the revenue from that program, and we're part of the traffic calming program in Spokane. So the idea is, is that these art installations will slow traffic and encourage more pedestrian So I skipped ahead a little bit, actually. So we just got done with our first intersection piece, which is the pride flag, and Zaxapone helped us a whole bunch with that, which was great, great turnout. And Tiffany Patterson installed it for us with a bunch of volunteers. Melissa and I also helped. And then we also have our crosswalk, I'm sorry, back to the intersections. We are going to be installing one intersection piece for each council neighborhood, so hopefully 29 total. We're not sure if everyone's gonna apply. We're gonna be opening up the application process in the next couple of weeks. And then we also have our crosswalk program. Our first one's gonna be installed June 23rd, and that's in partnership with Odyssey in the Perry District. How these crosswalks work is that each district is gonna be able to have two. Spokane Arts will kind of like help pick a location, and then we'll work with the district to get that approved. And then I also wear another hat at Spokane Arts. I'm their mural maintenance person. How this works is that I go around and kind of touch up murals that have been graffitied, and then also, I've been working to put anti-graffiti coating over all these murals so that it's easier to fix them in the future. Right now, I think we have three completed, and then a bunch that are at like 60% completion. Also, though, it's like, you know, I go in, I touch stuff up, and then I come back and there's new stuff to work on, so I'm kind of fighting with that. But yeah, so we have a lot of it taken care of this summer, which is great, because we've just, through like COVID, we haven't had the chance to be able to do that in the last couple of years, which is nice.
Can I ask you about the asphalt art? What is the timeline? Some of our neighborhood councils do not meet in the summer, and they're getting kind of worried that if there's a deadline, that they won't have time to submit something, or they'll get left out. So what does that look like?
So it is a three-year-long pilot program. We know it takes some time to get the first couple off the ground, and once we launch the application, I'm hoping we can get at least one done before winter this year, and then next year, we'll be lined up to get a bunch more done, probably, I'm guessing like four or five next year.
So what's the deadline, if you're trying to get something done by later this fall, for those neighborhoods, I want to know?
Once we launch the application, I think it will probably take like two months to figure out. Once we launch the application, I think it will probably take like two months to figure out which, which city neighborhoods get one. And it just kind of depends on like if the, the area they pick is viable for what we're doing. There's a lot of parameters and things we have to take into account for that.
And I would just add that we set aside funding for every neighborhood to get mural.
Right. They just want to make sure that they are in the wind of time.
Yeah. I was like, they shouldn't get missed.
Because some don't meet. Some will have stopped meeting and they'll meet in September.
Yeah, and, and we'll make sure to keep them updated when, once the applications open so that they know.
And could we receive the, the parameters on that? That way when we reach out to our neighborhood councils, we let them know here's the.
Yeah, I have a document I can send you about that.
Awesome. That'd be great. Thank you.
And then, do you want to talk about?
As a part of our ongoing mural maintenance, we partnered with Downtown Spokane Partnership to be a part of Spring Clean Week this year. It's something that they do every year as a part of their efforts to clean up downtown. And we were able to kind of hitch onto that ride to help with our spring mural cleanup as well. So during that week, we were able to wash eight murals, which really just includes scrubbing the murals, as you can see in the photo there. We had over 50 volunteers come out to help us scrub those murals, including several city employees. It really was just a wonderful show of community and people coming out to make Spokane more beautiful. So we wanted to highlight that. And it was able to really kick off Shelby's mural maintenance program to have them all a clean slate from there. Then the last kind of update that we want to talk about, which is a very recent launch, we just launched our digital sculpture walk tour. This is an addendum to, you may have seen our brochures previously that had all the sculptures in it. Now it's a digital form. You can take it anywhere. You can access it from anywhere. This was in partnership with Visit Spokane and we could not have done it without them. The sculpture tour includes 56 sculptures as well as all kinds of cool information on each sculpture. So there's stories, there's background on the pieces, background on the artists, as well as images. Hopefully being able to add some video content moving forward. It's a really great platform that we're also hoping to expand to include other tours moving forward. So maybe a mural tour, possibly our cultural trail when we get to that point. And pretty much any unique Spokane landmarks that we want to include, we can start building that out. So really excited to have this launched. If you want to check it out, you can at tours dot visitspokane dot com. It is live. Tell your friends. We will start marketing it pretty heavily in the next few weeks. And that is our update. Thank you, everyone.
Any other questions for spoken arts?
Point of personal privilege. Melissa, would you stand up? We know this will probably be your last time with us.
Actually, you're stuck with me the whole, I will be back to present to council on another topic.
Oh, well, all right then. Well, great.
Take it back.
I'll take it back.
All right. I just wanted to thank you all for all your work. And I know there was a lot of discussion about the cost of the mural before it was installed. And having it now completed, we know that it came out to about $8,500, which comes out to about $2.60 per square foot, which is cheaper than you would pay an interior, a person to paint an interior room. So I just want to thank you all for keeping the cost low and bringing great benefits to our city.
Good job.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the civil service update with Kelsey Pearson. Nope, we're postponing that. All right. The next after that is Municipal Law and Justice Coordinating Subcommittee. And that's with Maggie Yates. And council president, are you gonna?
I just introduced Maggie. Maggie's a Spokane product and spent many years at the county coordinating their criminal justice improvements. And we asked her to accelerate the drafting of a potential law and justice coordinating subcommittee, similar to our other subcommittees. We announced that we were going to think about doing that last year in May. And one of the reasons we hired her is we hadn't made much progress. So we got her on that. So she's prepared some draft documents and she was just going to share it with council.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. As you heard, my name is Maggie Yates and I'll just give Jacoby a moment here to pull up the presentation. But as, as he's doing that, I was asked to help sketch out a governance structure to support city council's public safety agenda. And so that's what I'm here to share today. Ultimately, what I'm recommending is that the city council pursue something similar to a criminal justice coordinating committee. That's something that is recommended by the National Institute of Corrections to bring all of the various actors together and make sure that there's collaborative strategic problem-solving across the criminal justice system. For those of you who don't know, the National Institute of Corrections is a federal agency that provides technical assistance in the correction space. So it's their recommendation to do something like this. The authors, the Criminal Justice Commission, the authors of the Blueprint for Reform, also recommended that the county adopt something similar to this in their recent status report. So the county has the Spokane Regional Law and Justice Council and there was concern over the efficacy and the efficiency of that body. And so the Criminal Justice Commission recommended they establish a criminal justice coordinating committee. And again, it's really intended to have comprehensive data-driven planning that improves outcome, efficiency, and equity across the criminal justice system. Criminal justice coordinating committees really share similar characteristics, including a clear structure, engaged membership, deliberative strategic planning, community engagement, and permanent staffing. So I'm going to walk through each of these characteristics briefly today. You're welcome to interrupt me with questions or hold those to the end. First up is a clear formalized structure. Council can establish this through a resolution and it would be recommended to do that with very detailed language regarding the purpose and the structure and the responsibilities of this, this body. And it can be established as a subcommittee under the Public Safety Committee. It's a recommendation by the National Institute of Corrections as well to create an executive work group that would really manage the agendas and monitor progress. And that's a way to really increase transparency and accountability rather than just having a single individual manage those, those agendas and those benchmarks. The subcommittee can also establish other work groups by a vote as needed. So specific focal points or populations that are relevant to criminal justice planning, like behavioral health or violent crime prevention, racial equity, things like that. Oh, and then finally, before I move on from this point, it is really important to include a data sharing requirement as a part of the resolution. We really want to make sure that the reforms and the policy planning are data-driven so that you're able to monitor progress and, and ensure that you aren't just sort of throwing darts in the dark, but actually have an understanding of what the issue is and how can you address it effectively. Next, you want to make sure that there is appropriate engaged membership to have really thoughtful, effective policy. You want to make sure that membership is inclusive. The criminal justice system, as you all know, even just in the city of Spokane, is incredibly vast. It includes a lot of different actors, both within the government and within the community. So you want to make sure that you have all of those various sectors represented. In order to make sure that community is a part and engaged in this body, you want to lower barriers as much as possible. That includes being thoughtful about when and where the subcommittee meets and also creating or setting aside a modest budget to compensate members who are not participating as a part of paid employment. So here we've just sketched out some of the positions that you would want to make sure to include as a part of the subcommittee. The Spokane Police Department, city probation, prosecution, public defense, the municipal clerk, court clerk, excuse me, the presiding judge in municipal court, and then representatives from the city legislative branch and the city executive branch. The chair and vice chair of the Public Safety Committee would be the recommended representatives from the legislative branch. Next is the various constituencies you want to make sure are included as members in the, the municipal law and justice subcommittee. And I'll, I'll let you see, see these up on the slide here. But it's really important to strike a balance between government actors and community representatives. This is really difficult to do. And the way that we're recommending council proceed here is to have 10 government representatives, which you saw on the, the previous slide, and then 10 community representatives. Again, having inclusive membership is critical for credibility. It also is critical to have diverse perspectives represented. Because the criminal justice system is so complex, you need to have people at the table representing different junctures so that you really understand how it's operating currently and how you want it to operate better and how exactly to get there. One of the first tasks of the, the subcommittee would be to engage in data-driven strategic planning. There's a couple of different ways you can do this that we can go into in more detail if that's of interest. One's called a key decision point analysis. One is intercept mapping. But under either model, the idea is to identify different intervention points across the criminal justice system. Brainstorm relevant data points, both quantitative and qualitative that's related to that intervention point. Then you want to collect the data, make sure that quantitative data is disaggregated by demographic detail. And then start to identify trends, start to identify challenges that the data reveals, and then begin to develop policy solutions. And then you'll want to prioritize those low-cost, high-impact policy solutions first. Next, criminal justice coordinating committees that are very successful engage in robust community engagement. We know this is incredibly difficult and a difficult undertaking for government because it takes time, it takes resources. And it's, even though it's difficult, we also know it's incredibly important because those relationships that you're investing in provides you with incisive feedback to strengthen programs. It provides you with buy-in and change management facilitation. And then of course, it just helps with the sustainability and the success of program implementation. Community engagement can be done through a variety of different means, including town halls, participating in already-established community meetings with concerned community groups, surveys to help expand participation, and then of course, making sure that public comment for the subcommittee meetings is accessible and straightforward. Finally, NIC, National Institute of Corrections, has flagged that permanent staffing is critical to long-term success for these types of bodies because you need administrative support to move not just the meetings forward, but the recommendations that they would be making to you all as council members. So ultimately, I think it would be beneficial for the city to establish an office for community safety under the mayor's office. If that was to happen, you would want to reevaluate whether it makes sense to continue moving forward as a subcommittee or transition to a, a formal committee. And this office would not only provide support to the municipal criminal justice coordinating subcommittee, but it would make sure that the city is engaging in holistic public safety investments, including things like affordable housing, increased green space in low-income neighborhoods, making sure that vacant lots are rehabbed as well. Street lighting, which has also been proven to reduce overnight crime. So all of these initiatives that we know are public safety investments, but sometimes we can easily lose sight when the demands internally as systems actors are so great. So that's really the, the big sketch and I'm happy to take questions and also include any additional comments from council president.
All right. Any questions for Maggie?
I'm just going to add that this is trying to do what the county did successfully for several years until they removed the city for a variety of reasons. And the thing that, I'm calling this our subcommittees 3.0. We have our Housing Action and Sustainability, not Sustainable, Housing Action and Equity subcommittees that are, have been operating. Our Sustainability one has kind of gone to a bigger piece with an executive committee and more members. This, what is, I think really exciting about this is it brings the administration onto the subcommittee. Most of the other subcommittees have asked, well, we need the administration. If we're going to actually work on policy and get feedback, we need them in real time. And one of the things that worked really well on the county, SRLJC, was you had the police chief there and then you had community members there and they were all at the same table with the prosecutor, all that, and kind of working on that and really moving it ahead. And at the city, we've had some work groups of just government people, but not the community people. And things have not gone as fast and been as data-informed as we heard this would be proposed. So I'm excited that it could be a collaborative thing going forward and move us forward.
Thank you, Maggie. I'm excited because there has not been a transparency around these conversations, at least not from the city, since the county disbanded or cut back on theirs. So the community's been asking us, when will these conversations take place? How do we get involved? How do we have our voice heard? And this would be a structure, the other two committees have been working well, as another venue for them to get into city government. So I'm excited if we get this stood up the way that the other two, I think it'll be really beneficial for the city and move us towards a more positive communications.
Absolutely. I agree, council member Wilkerson. And if I might just add, I think it really sets the city council and the city of Spokane up to be leaders on public safety and to really illustrate a model of community partnership and policymaking. I've been in conversation with Alex Jubelisco about including Racial Equity Subcommittee, Chair and Vice Chair members to help review applications that would come in that the city council members would appoint to make sure that there is an equitable lens applied to the application and appointment process as well.
Yeah, I think our subcommittees by and large can do some good work. One of my hesitations with subcommittees at this point is that some of them do not want to have their, do not necessarily want transparency in their, in their business. And I would just suggest moving forward that if this is something that we go forward with, that I think meetings should be, you know, recorded, that the public can see because this is substantial work being done on behalf of, of the city. And that can be very good substantial work done on behalf of the city, but anything along those lines. I think that should be a major consideration in our formation as, as we do it.
And just so you know, that's anticipated. When we do the resolution on that, I think we're going to make it for the regular meetings, not necessarily their ad hoc work groups and thing, but the regular meetings that they, that they are. So far, we've put in the language that says they have to comply with the OPMA. OPMA does not require that they record it. But I think some of us, when we thought we were doing that, was that, well, we were requiring that you record it, but they, but they weren't because the OPMA doesn't. But we can in our resolution say that. And my understanding from the, the one group that doesn't want it recorded is, you know, they basically said, well, you guys make the rules, so you can tell us, but we're not voluntarily. Because, because of some history that they have. But I think we could incorporate that in the resolution, setting this up to apply to all of them.
Well, and there's, there may or may not be an ordinance coming forward along those lines, so.
Do we have a second sponsor on this one?
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Maggie. Have a good day. All right. Next is Spokane Public Library Resolution, and that is mine. So this is just a resolution that would make it clear for the public library to offer programming on Spokane Falls Boulevard into the plaza. And after the plaza, the CSO Tank Plaza right here. They've been having some challenges cooperating with the administration on costs that would make it unprohibited for them to be able to do these events all summer long. And when the tank was created, there's, I wasn't around that time, but from my understanding, there was a lot of discussion and planning about the design, about how that could be programmed regularly throughout the summer from basically Memorial Day to Labor Day. And so they reached out and the library liaison, and they were just saying that the costs were a little too high, that it was like $6,000 for one event that would make it wipe out their entire budget. And so this would just say that hopefully they can get this resolved without any council resolution or action, but the saying that our interest is that this would be offered at no cost for those events programmed through the library. Yeah.
Yeah, just to say, I, I understand there's some similar situations happening with some of the after-school programs in the parks where they're being charged just absurd amounts of money to have kids there. And so I think this is a big issue that it's not just this, but we also need to look, I think, citywide at how those are applying.
Any other comments?
Councilmember Kinnear has her hand up.
Go ahead, go ahead. Councilmember Kinnear.
Hi. Was I called on?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks. So I have some concerns. One is, we've got to echo. That's the first concern. One is that we're delving into operations. And my other concern is that we're authorizing overtime for police and streets. And at the same time, we're looking at our budget, which is problematic right now, and trying to cut costs. The administration is trying to put holds on overtime. And we're saying, go ahead. And so I have a problem with that. If Matt Boston is in the room, I'd love to hear from him as well.
I don't see him in the room.
Could Andrew come up and speak to us? Do you feel like being put on the spot? Do you feel like being put on the spot, Andrew?
He, he was here, just in case there were questions.
I guess I would need to know a little bit about the volume of community groups that are asking to use this space.
So this was actually initiated by council president back earlier this year, asking us to look at programming the space, to put some positive activity on Spokane Falls Boulevard. It makes sense for the library to sort of control that because it's right on the exterior of our building. The first community group that we've been speaking with is actually the Tacos and Tequila. It's the Hispanic festival for Spokane, which would be held in late August. I think it's the last weekend in August. Moving forward, you know, we would like to see more activity around this space. So what that looks like, we don't know yet because we would have to nail down the costs of what everything would be and coordinate the efforts within the city to, to make that happen. Some ideas that we've had, though, is possibly having a farmer's market there and inviting a, a different cultural group than the city, you know, on a weekly basis, come and, and help out with programming the space.
I thought that was part of, I thought DSP was in a partnership of programming that space.
I don't think anything's been officially established.
They ducked out of that, they didn't want to.
A few years ago.
They had kind of a conflict with one of their main board members who owns a mall right next to it.
So, do you have the staff internally to pull this together and?
We would have the staff to do this. You know, it's, it would be tight, but it's something that we see the benefit for, for the community as a whole as well. The library often serves as platform, and I think that this is just an extension of that.
I just wanted to add some context. As Andrew mentioned, several years ago, when council was deciding, the proposal by council was to actually close Spokane Falls Boulevard right in front of the library permanently and direct people on South Lincoln. And there was, we had long discussions with Public Works about that, and we came up with this compromise that from Memorial Day to Labor Day, we would close it on the weekends when there's not as much traffic and make use of that amazing plaza that we built over the tanks and the new library building. And it's just a great gathering place. And so that was the compromise, and it was designed at the time with the information that was given to us, that it was not going to need police presence. It was very, it had some barriers that could be put in there pretty easily. The signaling could be worked on so that it was a different flow during those days than it was on weekdays commute. So that was the agreement, and just kind of year after year went, we didn't hear anything back. So I did go to Andrew, especially after DSP said they didn't want to do it, and said, hey, can you guys do the programming of it? And so that's where this is coming from. It's not that every, any community group that wants to do something, they just get to do it for free. It's would they do it within the auspices of the library's kind of programming? It's also not all of Spokane Falls Boulevard, it's just that one little section. And there are, we just, this kind of rose up in discussion the last few days, but there are other potential funding sources for putting up those barriers and closing those barriers down and things like that that we probably need to explore. But I think that the point of this resolution is to say, hey, we've waited a long time for this, let's, let's move forward and get this figured out promptly. Summer is here, we could be making use of those amazing and expensive investments now. So that's kind of the purpose of it.
And our failsafe right now is, we can do the tacos and tequila on Lincoln between Spokane Falls and Main for free, as far as traffic control goes. So that's our failsafe for, for this time, but it'd be great to work something out in the future.
Yeah.
As I said, Jacoby, I'm noticing messages that they can't hear online.
Fix that.
It's fixed, okay.
All right, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily hate the idea. I think it could be cool, that is a, a great space to be, you know, doing events and stuff. We have made a substantial investment in that area. But you have brought up a couple of things, and, you know, speaking about Public Works and those kinds of things. I don't know if Marlene or, you know, Johnny want to come up and talk to us about any of that and how it would work out.
Member Bingle, so the administration is not opposed to having this discussion, but we have to have the discussion. This is not something that should be done in a resolution. This is something that should be discussed amongst staff and the library system and how this works as it relates to the closure of the streets, what days the street is closed, what time the street is closed, how it impacts the traffic flow, the signal, how it impacts the mall. There's a, there's a ingress egress, major ingress egress to the mall from Spokane Falls Boulevard. So there's always all, all these various components. What's the plan? The groups, as I mentioned, days of the week. So we're not opposed to having this discussion. I just don't feel that doing this through resolution is the appropriate action. It's not the policy direction to go, in my opinion, this is my opinion, no one else's but mine, but we should have a conversation about what does this look like internally with staff? How does it impact any police presence that we may or may not need? And I don't know any of that. What are the costs that may or may not be? Where does the cost come from? As the council president says, there's other costs. But we haven't had that discussion, so I can't stand up here with confidence and let you know exactly operationally, because I'm in charge of operations, how this is going to work. I'm not comfortable with that because I don't know the plan.
Do you, I, I guess my, my question would be, does the administration want to sort of work this out internally and then come back with something that we would codify? Or do you think that, that it would just be worked out internally and, and we wouldn't need to come back to council?
I would like the opportunity to work this out internally. I asked for this last week, and it was explained to me this resolution was coming. I would ask, like to ask again, give me the opportunity to work through this. I just don't believe this needs to be legislated, even though it's a resolution. I think this is something staff can sit down. There's multiple staffs, library, parks and rec, Public Works, police, and others that we just want to make sure are engaged in this conversation so everybody knows what, what the expectations are.
And I talked to Johnny about that, and I said, I'm happy to drop it if it is fixed beforehand, but our timeline takes a really long time for anything to move forward. So said, unfortunately, I'll keep this on the agenda for committee. We don't have a meeting next week, so this isn't really looking at getting passed until July at the earliest anyway. So I think that's a lot of time for you all to talk and happy to drop that then.
I'd like to at least, well, who's going to own, who's going to own this to take the lead on it? Because somebody's got to own it to move it forward. And how soon we can expect something? I guess my frustration is, this should have happened 2019, 2020. We know COVID hit, that's a great excuse for everything, and it's valid. But where, but where do we go from here? Along with the zip line, if there's still a conversation about the zip line.
RFP for the zip line went out, I believe.
Yeah, see, so.
These were, I think these conversations were happening before.
Well, there, yeah, I will say, in terms of, these conversations could have been happening all along. We did have to wait until the library opened before it started. But my frustration is, like, we could have had all of it figured out, library's open, now let's go. And so I just, what I don't want to see is any backtracking from the agreement that we relied on for millions of dollars to do it the weekends, Memorial Day through Labor Day. And I have talked with Andrew before, and he's said, well, maybe we do it one weekend, one day a weekend a month to start. And at this point, we wouldn't even do it every weekend this year because it's, we're kind of late in the season. But that's what I'm interested in a resolution, is saying, okay, here's kind of some general parameters that we've agreed so that we don't lose that. Part of the challenge is the three council members who made that agreement are going to be gone soon. And I don't, and I've already heard from the administration today that a lot of them weren't aware of that. And so I'm like, okay, how do we make sure that that's memorialized so we don't backtrack that? So that's my only thing. But I, we had a good talk this morning about this, Mr. Perkins, and understanding you wanting to explore the operations and really be that, not be micromanaged on that. But as long as it's within the parameters of we're actually doing it over that time period, that's, you know, that's the thing. The cost, I think, was, the, it was never discussed that there would be a police cost before, and the worry is that that would be used to essentially torpedo it informally without doing it. That's the, so if we can get that figured out promptly so that that's not really a worry, then we might be able to adjust that.
But some, some of that might depend on what's being programmed, right? I mean, like, tequila, alcohol, you might have more, you know, you might need a police presence for that, but, but some sort of, you know, more softer outreach, different, so.
Well, my understanding, that event's been happening for years, and this is additional to the, if that event was on Wall Street, that cost would not be there. So this is in addition to it, it's just a change of venue. And that, I think, is the concern from our side. And to address Councilmember Kinnear's concern that this is operations and not council role, I think this is directly a budget discussion, and that was the direction for this resolution is about the budget. And so I think that has a role for us.
Councilmember Kinnear has her hand up.
Councilmember Kinnear?
I do. It's such a handicapping virtual, but nevertheless, I still have a budget concern. We're in a tight budget situation. And you're right, it, it's a budget, we are in charge of the budget, I agree. However, to not have this discussion ahead of time with the administration is short-sighted. This, this resolution doesn't even have any kind of fiscal note. So you don't know all the departments that are going to be involved and what the costs are going to be. The other piece is, this is a different time than it was even five years ago, and different precautions have to be taken depending on what you're programming. So you can't just put up boards or sawhorses and expect that that's your traffic control. So we have to take more precautions now than we did before, and that needs to be explored. So I don't, and I was part of the original conversation, and I agree that we really do need to program that space, but we need to be smart about it. And I'm concerned that in this budget cycle, that this is not the time to spend overtime money. Thanks.
Councilmember Bingle?
And I would have questions about it, too. Like I said, I think it's a fun idea. I think it's, it's great to activate the different downtown spaces, especially something with great views and everything like that, beautiful new building, totally get it. I would, when we talked about shutting that down, where was the, the bridge at, at that time? Was it under construction or was it?
We knew it was going to be under construction.
Okay, okay. So I guess my, I mean, my concern with shutting it down would be obviously the, anyway, getting out of downtown, that's why, I guess I can, Marlene and I, we can chat later just to see, you know, what traffic numbers are at the time. But is there, I mean, is there any realistic way that we can get some sort of understanding of this in the next couple of weeks, or is that?
Yes, it's very realistic, and I'm committed to doing that.
Okay.
I, I just want to address the, the bollard situation, because Wall Street right now is an active street that cars can drive down regularly, and we close it frequently for events. And we use, I've seen them, they're actually not even permanent bollards that we put in, they're like temporary bollards that are movable. And we don't have police presence blocking those, so I don't know why this would be dramatically different and have a much more public safety costs associated with it when it's, they're both downtown streets that cars drive on every day. And I've seen the mobile bollards that police use, like during the parade, that they moved around, that are very sturdy, heavy-duty, that my understanding were purchased for things like this.
This is about communication. Communication was not there, hasn't been there. So we have to communicate to get to your discussion now, Councilmembers of bone. Absolutely, those are options. But until we have this plan in front of us where we can walk through what that looks like, how that, who owns it, who's moving what, it's, it's challenging to have a conversation of what that would look like. Is that a possibility we could do? Absolutely. But we have to have a plan that's mindful to people's time, who owns it, who manages, what costs are involved, if there are any costs, and what those look like.
Any other questions, comments, Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I would just say, I, I think there's common ground here. I think that, that administration and council can get on board here. So I guess, you know, if you can get something to us in a couple of weeks, that'd be great to hear and, and understand, because I think it is a fun idea. So if we could get that going, I think we got something.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Andrew. Next item is the sales and use tax for housing and housing-related services with Nicollette Oaktree.
Did you just not say my last word?
I did.
Pronounced it?
No, I said it very quietly. I already called Steve, I'm just making up names today.
Oh, good afternoon, council. I'm going to try to go quickly because I know timings of the SS. So sales and use tax for affordable housing and housing-related services. You might be like, what the heck is that? Because most of us call it 1590. So just by way of reminder, the state legislature in 2020 enacted HB 1590, which allows cities to adopt a .1 sales and use tax by ordinance. The county also had this option, and they did not do it. They still can, but because they didn't do it, we, in November of 2020, passed an ordinance enacting the chapter of the code to allow for such use. And as a reminder for what the law says about what these can be used for and what the rules are, a minimum of 60% must be used for the following purposes, which is constructing or acquiring affordable housing, which may include emergency transitional and supportive housing, and new units of affordable housing within an existing structure and facilities providing housing-related services or acquiring land for these purposes, as well as constructing or acquiring behavioral health-related facilities or land for these purposes, and funding the operations and maintenance costs of new units of affordable housing. So the other piece of it that I'm not sure everybody understands, but I want to put it out there just in case, which is that of the 60%, it's supposed to be provided to persons who are at or below 60% AMI and a member of the following groups, persons with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, persons who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, this also includes families, unaccompanied homeless youth or young adults, persons with disabilities, domestic violence survivors. And I was able to get this today, this is hot off the press. It doesn't go into effect until June 15th, but this is the new AMI information from HUD, so 89,000. And then it also breaks it down between percent AMI and households, as well as the fair market rent limits. I encourage you to see where your salary as council members fall within all of that. It's a fun little task. I'll email this to you guys as well. This wasn't in the slides earlier that I sent to you, but, because I just got it. So some of the proposed changes that this ordinance, the draft of which you also received an email, it would add language that makes the SMC consistent with RCW. It changes the 60% minimum, remember it said at minimum 60% to 75%. So roughly 75% for new units of affordable housing, 25% for programs and services to support housing stability. And one of the reasons why this is important or worth pointing out especially is that one of the last rounds of 1590 funds that went out were for rehab mostly and maintenance of, of other units and not as many new units as we want. We need more new units of affordable housing to really effectively use these funds. So the proposed changes also create additional priorities for gap and seat funding for the construction of new units, again, bold, of affordable housing, especially those that allow for occupant homeownership, rent-to-own leases, and cooperatively owned multifamily projects. This piece was really important. The last time you guys talked about 1590 funds at Urban Experience was in February of last year, and Brian McClatchy was presenting to you all, and that homeownership piece was, was brought up. Now, it's going to be difficult for people who are in that 60% AMI range, but that shouldn't mean that we shouldn't try to prioritize those opportunities for homeownership. Additionally, housing within a quarter mile of transit, the RCW or the, excuse me, the SMC currently says a quarter or an eighth of a mile instead of a quarter mile, but everything else that we've been talking about, Boca and otherwise, has been a quarter of miles, so just shoring that up. And then possibility of this project readiness. So I kind of threw this out here, obviously these can change, but if we can have it shovel-ready within six months, move-in-ready within 18 months, the idea is to prioritize projects that are really ready to go. Right now, in the SMC, it says that construction should commence within 24 months of the award date. And I noticed that when you look at all of the projects that have been funded to date, a lot of them don't, aren't even going to really start or even be completed until years away. We, we need these units yesterday. Also, and the proposed changes are for these projects that might displace folks, right? Having some anti-displacement strategies in place so they know what they're going to do with the folks who would be displaced by the newer development and the use of those funds. Let's see here. Are there any questions so far? I know I'm kind of going, like, going through this pretty quickly.
I have a quick question on the last slide. Did we define new units? Because we had a proposal that came before us that said new units, and it was actually about half the number that they?
So I don't know if it has a specific definition, but, I mean, that is one of the impetuses behind trying to say, hey, it needs to be new units, because those units were rehabilitated. Are you talking about the Hifumian?
Yeah.
Right, so it was like 84 or 86 units, and then they were like, oh, yeah, it's like 86 new units, but actually it turned out it was only about 40.
Right.
Yeah, new units. And that's one of, I mean, we get that project needed those, those kinds of things, and it was for a very vulnerable population of people, and it fit all the terms of the 1590. But I think overall- terms of the 1590. But I think overall is spending less time and money on rehabbing and maintenance and prioritizing the new units. I'm not sure, do we need a specific language for new units?
Well, I was just going to say, we don't, I don't think we, we mean new units like normally. And the thing is, one of the reasons I'm excited that Nicolette is working on this and is going to be meeting with the Housing Action Subcommittee about it is, it's not that it's a bad idea to rehab other, you know, that does need to go. But most of us, when we passed it, and most of the community thinks really this is for additional units. And it doesn't mean that the Haifumi project wouldn't get funded in the future. It's just that the priority would be someone who did the unit. So if there was no proposals, and frankly, I think that's one of the reasons so many rehab units were included in the last one, is that we, the local nonprofit development community didn't have enough projects there for the amount of money. I'm assuming they are now with this money on the board, they're coming up with more and hopefully will. But if there was competition between a rehab and new units, my sense of the council is we want new units. And let, and use other sources for rehab.
And that, I think, was, was my point, is that, again, the rehabbing is, is just fine. But when you're talking about new units, I mean, in a housing crisis, we're talking new units, not, not redoing old apartments. So.
Councilmember Catherine?
Yeah, on the next slide, I'm wondering, kind of, how did we narrow down these specific positions for the scoring committee? I, I really?
Well, I'll get to, I'll get to that in one second. One thing I want to remind you of is that you do have other priorities that are in there. These were just the ones that were changed. So you can, when you review the, the draft ordinance, you can see that. But that's a good question. And this is an important piece because currently, the way that the SMC is written, this, all of the responsive RFPs, all those applications would have had to go to the Housing Action Subcommittee, but they did not. So including like the last round, that went through the CHHS Board, and it was lumped together with other funds, which is, which is fine. CDBG funds, some ARPA, and, and then some 1590. The only problem is, you know, what use is it having it written in the SMC that it's supposed to be reviewed by a specific subcommittee if it actually doesn't go through that process? So sort of my thinking here is, is to actually make it a little bit more flexible so that it actually can still go through. The CHHS Board is a very well-developed board, and they have been doing this for a while. And they, the RFP Committee and the, the persons who review that have a lot of experience doing this. And so, you know, I don't think that the desire, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to completely take it back over the way that the SMC is written, but to leave it a little bit more open for that sort of flexibility, and then to also include a member of the Equity Subcommittee. So actually, it would be including the CHHS Board, which it didn't previously. It said that they could in tandem make recommendations. But in terms of the reviewing of the applications, it was supposed to be in the Housing Action Subcommittee. Now, to be fair, I think there have been four different leaders in the Housing Action Subcommittee in the last 18 months. And so I can kind of get why that didn't go through the normal process. And we do want to get those monies out. But that's kind of the thinking behind the scoring committee.
But I, I guess I feel like we're missing an individual, I mean, it could possibly be covered under Housing Action Subcommittee, but I think there's a big lack of balance there right now. And so it probably wouldn't be. And that is somebody with actual experience in development and, and construction, and understands construction financing, and understands, you know, all those little bits that go into this to make it cost effective. I mean, I think our first and foremost goal is to produce units that are the most cost effective as possible. And so we want people who are making decisions to help propel that that is a, you know, a priority.
Yeah. So there's a great struggle, because I totally agree that we need expertise in these kinds of things. And there's a great struggle I just want to make you aware of in case you don't know this. But with the CHHS Board and the COC Board, for example, used to be one board. And they had to split it apart to make sure that there weren't any conflicts of interest. And so now with the CHHS Board, you can't be somebody who could potentially receive any of those funds and be a part of the board or any of the sort of scoring committees or anything like that. And that in part was to keep that conflict of interest out. So we do have this tension of, how do we make sure that we have experts reviewing all this? And how do we make sure there are no conflicts of interest? And I feel like that is a, that is a great question that I think needs to happen across any sort of boards dealing with this kind of, you know, procurement process. I don't know the best answer to that, but I'd be happy to hear more about it.
I think we can identify folks that will never, ever apply for these funds and who have expertise in the field and would be willing to sit on or rotate with a group, you know, could be a different group. And one year it's one person, the next year it's somebody else, and they just rotate. But it just seems to me like we need those people with the expertise who've been out in the field doing this stuff.
Yeah, I agree. And as the council liaison for the Housing Action Subcommittee, I'm really grateful if you could help me, you know, develop a more diverse membership of the Housing Action Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Definitely, when I took it over, it had suffered from a lot of people leaving because of how disjointed things have gotten. And there is a need to, to build that back up. And I think you're spot on with that expertise that's required.
And I just wanted to add in, the way Nicolette did this was more by entities as opposed to specific, but that kind of language could get worked into it, subject matter expertise. And it doesn't, it could still have this, and then it could say, and member, we need members with X or Y subject matter expertise.
Okay.
Okay. And then another piece to what I wanted to mention were quarterly updates on the status of projects and programs awarded 1590 funds. So one of the things I ran into when I wanted to get a, sort of like, here are all the projects that have been awarded 1590 funds, and this is where they're located, and this is their, you know, the date of completion, all this, really struggled. It seems that we actually have not been doing a, or we could do better at tracking of those, those projects. And so some of the proposed changes that I included were these quarterly updates on the status of these projects. And really, we can add in a lot more of these, you know, if it's just not name and location of the projects or programs. Again, here's the number and kind of units, are they new? Are they actually rehabilitated? Number and demographics of persons served. Part of that makes sure, too, that we're complying with the requirements, that we're doing 60% AMI or below, and this subpopulation of people. And then again, the estimated date of completion and any changes to that timeline. I feel like it would be really helpful for you guys to know that, for the Housing Action Subcommittee to know that, for the community at large to know, this is where these funds are going, this is all the great, you know, things that they're doing, and, and see that we're actually building affordable housing with these funds. Okay. So in terms of the timeline, today, June 12th, Urban Experience Committee. June 15th, I'll be taking this to the Housing Action Subcommittee. I do want to remind you, too, that with the council framework that was presented to you in February of last year, the Housing Action Subcommittee did vote on a series of recommendations that they brought forward. And those were never formally adopted by council, regardless of the fact that they do match some of the things within the SMC. And by reviewing that meeting, I tried to integrate some of the suggestions that you guys had made to capture those pieces that weren't there that you guys wanted to see. But then I'll be bouncing this back to them. And then on June 26th, it would go for a first reading. July 10th, final reading and a vote. Also, in between some of these pieces, I'll be consulting with Chris Wright to make sure certain sections are shored up, including a mistake I found in the very original version of the ordinance you passed. Just, of course, I very Nicoletified that, but it was, it was crazy. We'll get that taken care of if it needs to be. And then, and then also talking to the CHHS Department about this timeline and how realistic it is in the section of the code about funding process. Because it does say that by June 1st of each year, these applications should go through a certain process, and no later than May, it should go through a certain process. And right now, they're trying to shore up how they do some of their other, other funding cycles. And the timing of all these different funding pieces make it really difficult for the folks who are actually trying to develop or provide these services. And so if we can kind of get that synced up with other funding cycles and make sure this is what they want and what's, makes practical sense. So I'll be meeting with them to try to discuss those things. And then I'm willing to have any one on ones with you all to go through this and make sure we capture any of your suggestions.
So my, my ask, and I know time is very tight, and I don't know exactly where and how to fit it in. But I, I know our chief financial officer has put together a plan that they're still working on. And I think they've talked to a few of us about it. But I think it'd be great to have that presentation before we vote on this to see how we're in alignment, where maybe there's some tweaks we could work together on, et cetera, et cetera. Because I know they have a pretty robust plan that includes the sales tax dollars as well as possibly some other buckets of funds, too.
Yeah. And it's my understanding, based on having seen that presentation, that this would fit right in there. And that really, that was more focused on bonding, which is already a, a part of the SMC. It's a total thing that can be done. So, but yeah, I, I think that I, you know, we obviously need to make sure that we're, we're using these funds the best way, and that our plan is strategic and aligned, and that everybody's on the same page. And of course, as you know, from my history, I'm always willing to sit down on the other side and, and talk about these things so that we can make sure that we have the absolute best peace possible when we go forward with any of this. I obviously don't have the power to create, to make that happen. So you might have to talk to your fellow councilmembers.
This is my verbal suggestion to, yes.
All right. Any last questions for Nicolette?
I just see council president as sponsors. There are second sponsor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Wilkerson.
All right. Thanks, Nicolette. Next is adopting in Spokane, We All Belong as a City Motto. And that looks like it's going to be briefed by Alex. Jabilisco.
Well, good afternoon, council. And I will be looking for a second sponsor as well. So I am here presenting and introducing an ordinance establishing the motto to, in Spokane, we all belong, and adopting a new section to the code. We checked with the administration and also looked for, to see if there was executive orders, or if it was already written in the code. And apparently, we don't have official established city motto. Belonging is one of the concepts that council president took away from our Equity 101 training in 2021. And we've been working towards creating this vision where Spokane, we all belong. So creating a sense of belonging requires a set of values, practices, that ensures that no persons are left out of representative government, and more broadly means ensuring that all members of Spokane's diverse communities have a meaningful voice and opportunity to participate and design political and, and cultural structures. So having a motto that reflects that commitment to ensuring that all residents feel like they belong in Spokane will be helpful. So council president, he's been saying it all over, everywhere, I believe. But we officially, or he officially presented it at the Equity Subcommittee and at the Human Rights Commission in March. And we had some mixed responses. Some found it that it could be traumatizing for those in the community that feel they're consistently alienated. Others made the point that models from other cities are always supporting economic goals. But this one talks about bringing people together and creating a vision of community. And then I think there was a third, a third opinion that the majority probably supported. Maybe not the majority, but we had good conversations that they recognize that not everyone in Spokane feels like they belong, but that the motto would be a vision to aspire toward. This ordinance establishes a motto and asks departments to incorporate it where it makes sense. In regards to achieving Spokane where we all belong, it would leave it to council and the city to continue doing this work ongoing besides just, just creating this motto. And for that, you know, we are inviting John Powell from the Othering and Belonging Institute, who kind of leads in a lot of the DEI and belonging work, to kind of help council, give us the trainings, and also other community members to see how we can create a Spokane where everyone belongs. So you'll be receiving a calendar hold for that training, June 29th in the morning, which is a Thursday. So, any questions?
Yeah. So I'll just say, so my challenge is, I don't have any problem with the words and what they mean. But my challenge is, we went through a multi-year process to identify our city flag that concluded with the public actually voting to choose the flag. There's been no public engagement on this. There's been no public process on this. And there's been no opportunity for the community to vote or weigh in specifically on, on the, the phrase, a different phrase. Is this even the version of the phrase that we want? I mean, there's a lot of ways you could say the same thing that might sound, I think, more efficient, better, et cetera, et cetera. So I have a lot of challenges there with kind of just sort of coming up with this at the last minute and doing it without any of that public input. So that, that's where I'm at right now, very challenged. I think there should be a process and an opportunity for the public to officially weigh in. I will tell you some other communities that are doing some of this work right now, part of their discussion is on, should they even adopt a motto? Because there could be a, there are concerns over, you know, does that change the perspective of the city? Does it change some aspect of the city? There's a city in Iowa right now doing a lot of work on this. And they're trying to identify what version of, you know, we all belong to adopt. Or should they adopt a motto at all? Are they too multifaceted as a community? Are there too many things going on that, that would make, you know, that would sort of change people's perspective of what that community is and what they do in other areas? So I, I just have a lot of questions. And I think there needs to be just a lot more work to come to the conclusion that this is the motto that, that we're going to use. And then secondary, we have a sort of a community motto, if you will, that I also am not a huge fan of. I think the older one was better. The near nature, near perfect, I think, is the right perhaps motto. That obviously went away a few years ago. And so then there becomes this confusion between, well, what's, what's the motto? That's sort of the community motto. This is sort of a city council established motto. What's the real motto? So anyway, I just think there needs to be more consensus and, and community building around, around this concept. But not opposed to the idea of adopting a motto. And it could even be, be this one.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great point. Because we did go through a lengthy process for the flag. I really like our flag. I think we landed on, on one that's, that's really nice, pretty representative, you know, of, of again, maybe that near nature, near perfect, you know, motto itself. But yeah, I'm fine with a motto. But because a motto is basically the, the will of the city, you know, saying this is our expression about our city, I think there should be some pretty significant public outreach on it. Again, not necessarily opposed to, to this motto itself. But again, because this is something that we're going to be adopting, and it's going to be on, you know, and adopted by the different departments where reasonable. I mean, this is going to be on official city of Spokane, you know, documents and, and letterheads. I, I think that the community should, should be very involved in this process because again, it's a community statement. So.
And councilmember Wilkerson?
So I think the near nature, near perfect was a Visit Spokane slogan. So that had nothing to do with us in that community engagement. I believe in the belonging. So if you drive around and look at the school reader boards, they all say belonging. I'm looking at businesses, we all belong, belonging. That is a term that is inclusive. I don't know how that could not be seen or as an issue for our community. But we all want to belong. So belonging is already in our community. It's already being used by many organizations. Many businesses are promoting it. I can tell you, the Association of Washington Cities has adopted it. Belonging, DEIB, we belong. So obviously, really, we're on the front end of it instead of on the back end of it. And I don't think our other city models have ever been voted on that I remember.
We've never had a city motto.
Well, what was the one?
Choice.
The city of choice.
That was just a phrase from Mayor Condon.
That was just a phrase. So.
But he put it on a stationery and things like that.
Yeah. With no citizen input or anything. So we want to be more inclusive because we all belong. But it's a leadership part of this council is how we set the tone for the city. So.
We, we have like four more items on the agenda. So councilmember, and then we got to move on.
Really quickly, I would hope, because I remember the whole Spokane, near nature, near perfect, and all of that. But we also need to look in the, through the eyes of those folks that are selling Spokane to conventions and to outside organizations coming in and spending money. It would just be nice to get a touch from, with them.
We did meet with, we met with Visit Spokane, and they were fine.
They were fine with it. Okay. Yeah, that would be my one concern.
Councilmember, council president, you had no?
I, no. I'll continue to talk with people. I appreciate everyone's feedback. It's great.
All right. Thanks, Alex.
And a second sponsor?
I belong.
Councilmember Wilkerson. All right. And next, we have the Spokane Register of Historic Places nomination, the Ritter House with Megan DeValle on, online here. And Megan, if, we are a little over time, we got three more items. So if you can go fast, that'd be greatly appreciated.
I will go super fast. And the good news is, somehow I managed to be sitting here through all of the, all of the communication that we've just had. And I just realized I went straight into my presentation. And so you're not going to get my normal preamble this time. So see, I'm saving a minute and a half. I will rush through here. Architecturally significant under category C, the 1914 Alex and Fanny Ritter House is an eclectic example of the craftsman architectural style with both mission and Prairie style influences. The Ritter House is located at 702, oops, did I mess something up?
We see the map. We can see the map.
Okay, perfect. I'm sorry. Oh, gosh. Okay, perfect. I'm sorry. Oh, gosh, I think I'd never done this before. The Ritter House is located at 702 West 21st, within the Cannon Hill neighborhood, along the 21st Avenue Boulevard and close to Cannon Hill Park. Architecturally significant, the craftsmen style is strongly emphasized by the dwelling's very low pitched hip roof, widely overhanging eaves, deep cornice, full width covered front porch, thick porch walls and rough textured pebbled stucco plating. Finished with an arcade, the front porch is supported by a series of prominent arches influenced by Mission-style designs. Roof eaves are accentuated by Prairie-style modellons. So now you know what a modillion is. I've got some arrows pointed at those. The interior of the Ritter, of the Ritter House features casement and transom windows with both clear leaded glass and colored glass, oak floors, interior doors, woodwork and built-in. Built-in furniture includes bookcases with leaded glass doors, a drop leaf desk, buffet and hutch, oak plate rail and vertical panels in the dining room and some original lighting, including the dining chandelier and wall sconces. Builder Gus Bostrom worked as a building contractor in Spokane from 1906 to 1923. During the 17 years that he lived and worked in Spokane, he made a name for himself as a, as he concentrated his efforts in building multiple single-family homes, specifically in the Cannon Hill Park neighborhood, around the newly formed Cannon Hill Park and Pond. Bostrom was praised in a Spokemun Review Newspaper article from January 29th of 1910 as an extensive builder of homes in the area. The Ritters purchased the house at 702 West 21st in 1915. In 1907, Alex Ritter had established a pharmaceutical laboratory on West Broadway, in addition to running Ritter's Avenue Drugstore on West Riverside Avenue in downtown Spokane. In 1908, Alex Ritter included space for his brother, jeweler Louis Ritter, to display and sell jewelry in the drugstore on Riverside Avenue. After Alex Ritter's death in 1926, his wife Fannie remained in their home on 21st until her death in May of 1948. Alex Ritter was a popular and noteworthy Spokane merchant and prescription pharmacist. In his work, he showcased the prescription pharmacy within a drugstore idea to his son Herbert Ritter, who copied the idea at his own drugstore and passed it on to his son, Herbert Ritter Jr., Alex Ritter's grandson. The father, son, and grandson offered a unique three-generation legacy of Ritter prescription pharmacies and drugstores in Spokane. The Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission will review this nomination to the Spokane Register at their June 21 meeting, and staff will recommend that it's eligible under category C for architecture. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Megan? All right, great. Next item is school-based healthcare centers interlocal agreement with Spokane Public Schools. I think Marlene's here to talk about that.
I don't think I actually need five minutes. So just so you know, Council voted, I must have been late last year to put money toward school-based initiatives, including this concept of adding youth-based health clinics at two of the high schools. So we've worked with Spokane Public Schools over the last several months. They're going to install these clinics at both Shadle High School and at North Central. And we agreed to pay half the, the capital costs, which is about $300,000. So we were going to come forward with that interlocal agreement. It's really consistent with the umbrella partnership we've been working under for the last several years that included, you know, the addition of new middle schools and, and other work with that partnership. So this will just formalize that, that spend so that they can be reimbursed. So Spokane Public Schools would pay for the renovations upfront, and we would reimburse them half. So we would get the actual bill for half when they, when they complete those tasks.
Any questions?
Do you need a second sponsor?
Yes.
Sure.
You can.
Yeah, well, it probably started with the school-based partnership one, which is us, but then you could be third.
I just have a quick question. We could talk offline, too. Do you know if ESD 101's Shadle Wellness Coalition was involved in the discussions here?
I do not believe so for this particular item.
You and I can talk. It just might be a nice partnership for both.
Yeah, and this is just the capital funding. So Spokane Public Schools will do the actual operational contract and will go out for a bid type or proposal, RFP-type process, to get the operator for those facilities. And I believe they have one, kind of a model operating already at Rogers High School. So we're kind of looking at, at how that's working to, you know, so it, it should be a good addition to those neighborhoods and those schools.
Yep. And I'll send a note to the Shadle Wellness Coalition so they know, just to connect with somebody.
And this one's more clinical, so.
Right.
The Shadle Wellness isn't as clinical, but.
Right.
But it's lots of the same goals.
It would be really good to get them, yeah, at least talking.
Right. And there, there could be a space that they could use, you know, for maybe activities or so forth. So probably always have, you know, connections are better, even if it's not perfect. So.
Right. Thank you.
Anyway, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Marlene. All right. Then we have the North SPCA Boundary Expansion and Interlocal Agreement update with Amanda Beck.
Good afternoon, Council. Since we're so short on time, I'm going to have Jesse Bank come up, too.
Hopefully you and Terry were discussing how to strategize your time.
Uh, sure.
See who fights for it.
Um, so just to provide some background, we recently updated this in 2019. We're coming back for a further update of the interlocal agreement with the county to expand the Northeast So this is just an update to Attachment A, which would update the map, and then any necessary language in the ILA itself between us and the county that references the boundary expansion. There are no other contract amendments. If anything like that is needed, we'll deal with it at a different time. So really, the step would be to get this on the agenda for June 26. And then I do need a second sponsor.
Oh, yeah. Doesn't matter.
Not sure who's going to win at first.
I think it's your district.
It's in mine.
All right.
Well, I, I welcome all, so.
Um, but, so I wanted to actually leave time for Jesse to speak, but I do have a close-up. So this is the existing boundary. That's the hash line. Purple is our north expansion, and then the yellow is the southern expansion. And there are close-ups in case anyone has questions.
Good afternoon, Council. Great to see all of you. I think I've chatted with most of you about this, but this is part of an initiative that I started when I took over the position about a year ago. Just really looking at all of our policies, procedures, our plans, our goals, and just trying to make sure that coming out of the pandemic period, coming out of a period of sort of disrupted leadership, that we had a roadmap going forward, we really understood where we were and all of our policies, procedures, boundaries, et cetera, were all in alignment with that. So one of the things that came out of that effort was this relook at the boundaries. And a couple of things to note about this. One is that my board felt quite strongly that this be a dual ask of city and county, so that this is not just a specific ask to one body or the other. So that you see in the purple up there, we've got an ask to the county folks, and in the yellow down in the bottom, we've got an ask to the city folks. The real impetus behind this ask is, is twofold, really, for this southern piece, is one, to align the boundaries with kind of colloquially understood sub-areas, right? So in 2019, we had expanded to take over the Market Street corridor, and that was a decision that was made that the PDA was going to include the Market Street corridor, but we stopped. And so the idea with this is that we expand and we take the rest of the Market Street corridor into our boundaries. In addition, it's looking to align ourselves with business sectors that we are targeting in the future. So you see the bulb out for the Jubilant Pollister Steer site there to bring them into the fold, to help both our efforts in recruiting businesses like that as well as helping them expand some of their footprint down the road. Should they become landlocked, we can sort of begin to move them up into the PDA and create kind of a bioscience, kind of back-of-house manufacturing capability for a lot of the great work that's being done in the university district where they don't have that manufacturing capacity. And just for your own edification, and I'll get out of here quickly because I know Terry needs some time to speak, but the county expansion was really just an effort to add parcel sizes, large parcel sizes, that we really lack within the district. It compromises what we're able to do and what kinds of businesses we're able to, to attract. So with that, I will cede the floor. Any questions?
I would just add those northern areas there also, we are highly developable and we think will develop in the near term.
Yes, absolutely.
Which is part of that calculus.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Last but not least is Projects of Citywide Significance, Public Development Authority Job Creation, with Terry Stripes.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President. Council President, I wanted to get this forward quickly because you're on your way out the door. I apologize. Your last week's study session was supposed to be the entire accounting of the 2018, 2019 strategic funds, and that would have set up this discussion a little bit better. But let me talk about that a little bit, okay? In 2019, city council and the administration had come together and created the strategic plan. The Urban Experience Committee grew out of part of that strategic plan. One of the things that they set aside for is helping the PDAs. Two PDAs in particular with industrial job growth. And one of the incentives that we set aside funding for, $1 million, was to do job creation activities. This is construction, building buildings where people will be working in the PDAs, typically in the manufacturing and industrial-type services. So Brian McClatchy worked on this. I worked on this. Inga Note worked on this. Also, we lost two different Public Development Authority directors that were involved, Northeast and West Plains, and of course, the ever problematic COVID. So here we are today. Started working with Council President last fall about an idea. Last summer, you passed our Strategic Economic Development Resolution that said we're going to target our investments in the distressed census tracts. So, and you also passed Projects of Citywide Significance, which allows for us to go after a particular need, a particular need at a particular time. Last fall, we went through ARPA funding for affordable housing, and we got that all out the door. So this, when I started working with Council President on it, I said, well, let's do this like we're doing Projects of Citywide Significance, affordable housing. We set the criteria. We go ahead and exempt the property from paying the traffic impact fees, which has just now gone up recently, and then we pay those fees for them, back to our developer services. So we don't rob that impact fee money of funds that it needs to get projects built. So that is the proposal that I've put together for you. The target area is going to be the focus area within the PDAs. Those are the distressed census tracts. That's where we need to create jobs. Now, one of the things that over, under the original Projects of Citywide Significance program, one of the things that Council really liked was the fact that we tied that incentive to living wage jobs. So I've brought that forward in the criteria. So they have to bring forward 50% or more jobs of area median income plus 30%. And that was the definition that we set at that time. And then it's just whoever, whichever projects are coming in first, we get that money out the door to them and help move them fast through the permitting system and get their buildings up. So that's why I shaped it according to Projects of Citywide Significance. That's the administrative policy I have in your briefing. And then it won't actually come to Council until mid to late June for adoption, but I definitely wanted to brief before we lost Council President Beggs, because three of you weren't here and three of you were, or four of you weren't here and three of you were. How's that?
Just a quick question. So how do we track or do we track that living wage job? Is there a way to do that?
That's one of the reasons why I'm not ready to bring it forward at Council this month, because in talking with Legal about that, the old program, you just had to self-certify that you were going to do that. But when you adopted the new general facilities connection fee waivers, you put that in place where if they don't stay in compliance, they have to repay it. So it's a deferral and a forgiveness. And that's what Legal and I are talking about with this. It would be a forgiveness and then a deferral if you document that you created those positions.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm excited about this. I started working on my own thing along these lines, and it was great that you guys are already doing it. Also, shout out to Senator Bilog's office for working with us. But on that is, is the AMI plus 30%. Is that too aggressive? Is that something that people would be able to accomplish?
It worked. When we did it, and I apologize, I said AMI, but it is actually the per capita income. A living wage is 30, 130% of per capita income, which right now sits at just over $34,000. 30% of that would be at $44,000.
Okay.
So it's approximately $20, $21 an hour.
Okay.
And it worked with the first program when we did Projects of Citywide Significance.
Awesome.
I have just a couple of things. I like the distressed areas. I like that we're moving ahead. A couple of considerations. One, Council staff met with the former executive directors, and they have a scoring sheet that also brings in a sustainability lens that I'd like to see. I think I've shared it with you. I'd like to see a version of that because that further targets it. The second issue is the, when we did the new, when the PDAs, there was an understanding that half was going to go to Northeast, half was going to go to West Plains. And I, of course, sit on the West Plains, so they, they want to get their half. Councilmember Cathcart sits on the Northeast. I'm sure he wants his half and more.
We can definitely split it up even.
But yeah, I think.
It's just those two PDAs.
Yeah, but I think we should split, split it. What I was proposing last year when we were talking about it is that we split it even for a certain amount of time, and then after that time, if one hadn't used it, then it could go just to get the dollars out.
I'll do it. I can do with Legal on that.
The other thing I was, at least if I understood your proposal, you were doing it for both building permits and traffic impact fees.
No, just the impact fees.
Just the impact fees.
That's how you set it in the code.
Okay, all right.
And Brian McClatchy and I went round and round with James Richman and Inga. Creating the scoring process introduces some arbitrary decision-making. And so that's why when we updated Projects of Citywide Significance last time, we said, these are the parameters. You meet it or you don't. And so that's why we ended up moving towards not a scoring.
So. Well, in this one, it would be essentially your parameters, and then the more bells and whistles, the bigger percentage of the, of the waiver that you get.
I'll see what I can do about that, too.
Okay, yeah.
And so this will come forward to Council in July. You won't be here, probably, so I would like another sponsor. Right now, I have Cathcart and Beggs. Bingo? Thank you.
And one, I was just going to add, on the scoring thing, we gave them multiple ways to get there. So it wasn't just a limited pie. It was like, no, you can do it if you're more this way or more that way. So.
We did that with the Citywide Significance. You'll probably all remember the very detailed score sheets.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that concludes the Urban Experience Committee meeting. The next one will be July 10th, so we'll see you then. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, everyone.